President. Board Clerk Ryan A. Relas.
President.
And I am Board President Jackie Philbeck. Public speakers for closed session agenda items. There are no public speakers today for the closed session agenda items that were received as of 12:00 PM today. So let's adjourn to closed session and may I have a motion to do so?
Does that move Alvarez?
Second, Relas.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed? We will move to closed session.
I'm a breakfast.
Yes.
Oh, hey Jaci, how are you?
Oh, I love it.
How's your summer going? It's good, thank you.
How's it going?
It's going good.
Good.
It's the barbeque tender.
Yeah.
...
Right. Board member Juan Alvarez.
Good morning, good evening, everybody.
Board member Mark Lopez.
Good evening, hello, everyone.
Board member Dr. Paulo Magalas.
Hey, everybody.
Board clerk Ryan Relus.
Hello.
And as I said, I'm your board president Jackie Philbeck. To my left, our superintendent, Dr. Christopher Downing.
Good evening, everyone.
Dr. Mary Grace, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Good evening, everyone.
Dina Meland, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources.
Good evening.
Jessie Chavaria, Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services.
Hello, everyone.
Back over on my right, Tracy Golden, our Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Good evening.
Belinda Gordillo, is that correct?
Gordillo.
Gordillo. Our Communication Coordinator, welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Yesenia Yereno, our Senior Administrative Assistant. And in the back, our wonderful interpreters, Alina Avalar Roje and Mary Madrigal. Over here on my far left, Janice Cato, our Technology Support Technician. And I assume in the back, Benjamin Hausman, our Media Services. Benjamin's in the back, okay.
President Philbeck has had one comment. Actually, I learned on Monday, Janice Cato.
Cato?
Yes. Let me clarify.
Have I been saying it wrong all this time? And that you're so sweet that in nine years, you don't tell me, you don't tell me different? Janice Cato? Thank you for that correction. Yes, nine years. Thank you. Now you've embarrassed her, she's so sweet. Janice, okay, let me, let me do it again. And on my far left, Janice Cato. Technology Support Technician, there. Are we square?
We're good.
Okay. It only took me nine years. Well, that's like, um, Dina Milan, right? That we, we were saying for years, it's no, Dina Milan. Got that right. Takes us a while. Okay. Now, the report of closed session actions taken. There are none. So I need an adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So move to Alvarez?
Second, Relus.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five oh. Now we're into our Special Order of Business, which there is none. News and updates. Parent Leadership Group Updates. There are none this evening. And our Association Updates. There is an Association Update from ASMA this evening to be provided by Dr. Vanessa Marakine.
You got my last name right. You said it right.
Thank you, thank you, I try.
If that helps. Um, I'm just here on behalf of ASMA to share that we're very excited for, uh, to join the CISC eligibility, eligibility benefits pool. So we're looking forward to those stabilized rates. And I wanted to share our excitement on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, there is an Association Update from CSEA this evening to be provided by Kathy Hurd. Welcome.
And you did get my last name right, too.
I know you, lady. I know you, so.
So, um, I talked to Cindy Staneker, who is on our insurance team. And she encouraged me to come to speak to you tonight. CSEA Chapter Fifty-Four is delighted that our school district is working towards enrolling in a JPA for our medical insurance. This has been a goal of ours for many years. Last year, our team thought we were going to change to a JPA or trust company. Our bid had come in at one point six million dollars less than our current plan. We were very disappointed when this did not happen, as we knew this would affect our members' ability to afford quality medical insurance. The Joint Power Authority is a group of public agencies working together to get the best insurance at the best price. Our insurance committee has reviewed several companies. Over the past several years, our goal has been to find the best insurance at the best price for our district. This has become increasingly hard to do. Our people love what they do and want to be able to support their families with the best possible medical insurance they can afford. This year, we found that CISC Self-Inured Schools of California will meet our needs best. Their rates are consistent year after year, and they have the same insurance company options for our employees. They offer Blue Shield, HMO, Trio, APO, and Kaiser. Their prescription drug plan for Blue Shield is also similar to our current plan. We feel that with CISC, our employees will have the least disruption with the change. Going with a JPA makes so much sense. Their pooling power will help keep our rates stable. They will go out to bid for the entire group when necessary, and they are experts in the field. Let's move now to start reaping the rewards of lower medical costs. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no district news and updates this evening. So we're into our public speaking portion of the agenda. Speakers on agenda and non-agenda items. I do have one speaker, Mr. Fred Smoller, is that correct? Mr. Smoller, welcome. And Clerk Relus will let you know when you have thirty seconds left by the yellow.
I have three minutes, okay. Did you pass out the little document? Both? The cards and the piece of paper? Yeah, yeah, please.
So you have three minutes, sir?
Okay.
And Clerk will let you know when you have thirty seconds to finish up, and the red means that your time has expired.
Great, this is good news. This is good news, and let me start, it's free.
Okay.
Now that I have your attention.
Welcome.
I'm Fred Smoller, I'm a professor of political science at Chapman University. Been there forty years. It's an orange. I hope you'd agree with me that climate change is real. We see evidence all over the country, all over the world, and particularly here in Orange County. I was able to secure a five million dollar grant from the state legislature to put on something called the Orange County Sustainability Decathlon, which will be held from October fifth through the fifteenth at the Costa Mesa Fairground. And it will consist of several parts, one of which is the fifteen houses, energy-efficient homes, being built by college students from around California, but also from China, Virginia, and Tennessee and other places. If you recall, ten years ago or so, we had something called the Solar Decathlon at the Great Park. Well, for good or bad, I was the guy who brought it here. In any case, here's the good part. The Public Utilities Commission of Anaheim, our Public Utilities Department, has agreed to pay for the buses, but just for the high schools. And, but I have a sense that if you were to go, because I'm told buses are not cheap, about twelve hundred dollars a bus, and that would be hard on any district. But if you were to ask them, ask the superintendent, Mr. Downey, Dr. Downey, to, to ask the person in that folder, on that flyer, "We want to send so many buses." You would bring the students down on Education Day, we have the Houses, we have the Wyland Exhibit, we have several others that are being sponsored by cities. And then ideally, you'd come back and say for an hour or so, you would talk about the environment. We have a number of lesson plans, PowerPoints, suggested topics to talk about. Obviously, the teacher would decide what's appropriate. But I am hopeful to have this here every two years. Climate change is going to be with us, and education is one of the ways in which, it's a key way to dealing with it. So we have to start early. Now, I went to the legislature, we got funding for twenty twenty-three. And I said, gee, we want to do it every two years from now? And they said, wonderful, but we have to see local input, local acceptance. So if you go and you bring your students, or if you come on your own, I will be able to go to the legislature and say, look, we are the only one of fifty-eight counties to have this type of outreach program, and we would like you to support it on a continued basis. We're not Comic-Con, we're not Coachella, or the other types of festivals. It's not going to be nearly as big, it's not entertainment, but it's edutainment. I have to go. Anyway, I'll gladly, superintendent, you all have my cards. I have, gave you the thing. This is a good thing, I think, for the students. Thank you.
I just need a clarification, please. Could you repeat the date that you said for the OC Fair?
Well, we have, Education Day is October sixth.
Okay. I thought you had said the fifth, so.
No, it opens the fifth, it goes to the fifteenth. But we have one day just for school kids. Now, they can come anytime with their parents. Now, the other thing you can do, pardon me, I know I'm over. But I sent a PDF, um, just to Ms. Yereno. I apologize. It was a lovely name. In any case, she has the PDF. I would love for you, what you could do, which really wouldn't cost that much money, is help me promote it. Send it to the teachers.
I'm sorry, I have to ask you to complete. Thank you. Okay. We're into our Superintendent's Report. Item seven A. It's recommended the Board of Education declare a public hearing for the purpose of hearing comments regarding whether pupils in the schools will have during the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year sufficient textbooks and/or instructional materials consistent with the content and cycles of the curriculum frameworks adopted by the California Department of Education, Education Code six zero one one nine and three three one two six. Written comments, up to five hundred words, may have been submitted online via a form. Must have been received by twelve PM on Wednesday, August second, two thousand twenty-three. Let's see, are, do we have any? Did, did we get, so we, do I, I don't really need to go through all this, correct? Okay, thank you. So we, uh, nothing was submitted. So I will now close the hearing and give notice that a vote on this item is scheduled for the September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular board meeting. Next, we, up, we have our forty-five day revised budget report. Jessie Chavaria, our Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services. Matthew Slusser, Director of Fiscal Administrative Services. Thank you.
Well, I'm flying solo this evening. Matt had to take care of some other fiscal matters, right? So, good evening, Board President Philbeck, members of the board. This evening, I'm giving you a budget update in the form of the forty-five day revision. So as you know, um, the board adopts a budget in June, but at that time, the state has not yet approved the budget. So we do have forty-five days after the state has approved the budget to come back to the board and share any revisions or updates regarding what the state approved. So tonight, I do want to share the only change that we see in terms of our budget from what the, the board adopted is in terms of the block grants, one-time funds, right? The Arts, Music, and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant and the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. So how did that change from what you adopted or you approved in June? It's, um, it's the following. So looking at the Arts, Music, and Instructional Materials Block Grant, so when you approved the budget in June, we had a proposed cut of fifty percent. But that's because the governor and the main revision had said that's what he wanted to do. Since we didn't have an approved budget at that point, we had to incorporate that into our budget. So the state did approve a budget, and that fifty percent cut went down to six percent. Right? So the net effect of that, you can see, is five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Now, this doesn't mean that we're getting, that we're getting additional funding. If the board recalls back in December of twenty-two, you approved an expenditure plan in terms of this block grant. So we're actually five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars short in order to meet that expenditure plan that you approved back in December. And then the other block grant that was affected by the, what the state approved was, the governor was proposing a thirty-two percent cut to the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. So that equated to eight point nine million dollars, right? The, when the, the state approved their budget, it went down to fifteen percent. But it's still a cut of four point two million dollars. Now, what I do want to note here is that we received this money a long time ago, all of the twenty-eight million dollars. So the state's not going to ask for four point two million dollars back, because they know they can't do that. But the way they're going to get their money is that in terms of the disbursements in September, October, November, more than likely, that's how they'll recoup their four point two million dollars. So to summarize what I just shared with you, so when you approved the budget in June, it showed a reduction of thirteen point three million dollars in those block grants. The actual reduction is four point seven million. Once again, I want to be clear that this is not additional funding. It just restores eight point five million dollars back into the budget. But we're still short four point seven million based on the allocated expenditure plan that you had suggested. We move forward in supporting our students at the schools. So in terms of other state revenue, how it changes from the adopted budget, we had projected sixty point three at that time. It changes to sixty-eight point nine. So overall, that total revenue from June, it was three hundred and eleven point three. It changes to three hundred and nineteen point nine. In terms of next steps in the budget process, we were, we're working on the un-audited actuals. We'll present that to you at September, in the September thirteenth board meeting. Of course, our external auditors are working in terms of the audit process for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. They'll present that report to you in early twenty twenty-four. And then we'll come to you in December for board approval in terms of giving you a budget update in the form of the first interim report. And I will open it up to any questions that you may have.
Board members?
Yes, I have a question. Actually, I had two questions. You answered the first one, which is, where's Matt? So thank you for addressing that. That was my main concern. But some time ago, I had requested that we look into the state unclaimed property. So it's not necessarily related to this, but it's a budget-related item. Um, and I know we've been making some headway on, you know, reclaiming, recouping some of that. Do you have an idea and estimate in the past fiscal year how much money we actually have recovered, roughly?
Yes, Priscilla actually is responsible for that part of it, and she has been working on that. So what we'll do is provide through the Friday Board Memo, an update in terms of what has been recouped through that process.
Okay. And also, I just want to, as a reminder, they are small dollar amounts, but they do tend to add up over time. Some of them are a couple hundred dollars, some could be a couple thousand dollars. And just as a reminder, we want to also look for Anaheim City School District.
Yes.
Because there's, there's a few items I'm seeing right now that are kind of about three to four thousand dollars worth that are, that are there. So it's our money, we want to get it back, and we, you put it in the classrooms, use it for our students. So thank you for all your hard work, and, and tell Matt wherever he is, thank you to him, too. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chavaria, great report. Okay, moving on to our dual-language immersion update. Maria Villegas, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Magali Rodriguez, our Coordinator of Multi-Language Instructional Programs.
Wonderful, good evening. Board President Philbeck, board members, Superintendent Downing and cabinet members. It's our pleasure to have my team joining you this evening. We're always so proud of the work, and more importantly, of the people that make it happen. So I wanted to take a minute to introduce our wonderful team here, who's spearheading, spearheading a lot of our dual-language work. So of course, our coordinator, Magali Rodriguez. Our dual-language immersion teacher on special assignment, Lisette Anderson. Our newest member, we're happy to have her debut for you tonight. Kristen Kami Wong, so our Mandarin Curriculum Specialist. Oh, did I not say Lisette Sanchez? Oh, my goodness. I, I think President Philbeck is rubbing off on me. I, I might have said, I apologize. Let me, correction. And, and I, I won't take nine, I won't take nine years. Our wonderful Lisette Sanchez, my, my maiden name, I should know this. Dual-language immersion teacher on special site, my apologies. So, and our wonderful, now Kristen Kami Wong, our newest Mandarin Curriculum Specialist. Thank you for catching that. And of course, our Korean Curriculum Specialist, Sung Young Kim. I, I tried my best there. So again, I just want to, also, it'd be imprudent of me, though they're kind of on the front lines. It's really the work of many hands in our department, in Ed Services, that really keep that alignment piece that is so critical to our dual-language program and our gen-ed program. So they're not here, but I know that we, we're representing them as well. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over. We have a brief, timely presentation that we think will, is perfect for the beginning of the year. So I'll turn it over to Magali. And Maria, I will say in my defense that at least I was close. I, I was at least close. Good nature.
Well, that broke the ice. All right. Good evening. Can only go up from here. Okay. So good evening aboard cabinet. It's a pleasure to be here again, giving an update on our amazing, award-winning Dual Language Immersion Academy. Okay, so here on the screen, just in bold, as we prepare to open our doors on August tenth to all of our amazing students, we will be providing access in our Dual Language Academy to three thousand six hundred eighty-six students. That is as of today, but we know as we start getting closer, the next few days, the number continued to go up. So just wanted to make that impact of just the celebration of numbers when we first began at twenty-one students. And here we are, with a vision that continues to grow. So just as we are on the topic of enrollment, and here on before you on the slide, you see preschool through sixth grade enrollment. So I will highlight here the total number that I just mentioned, the three thousand six hundred eighty-six students. Also highlighting that we will be opening our doors to a hundred and sixty-nine classrooms with a hundred and sixty-nine teachers, again, preschool through sixth grade. And just highlight that this will be the first preschool Spanish DLI that we opened. So I know it's been a project that's been coming, that is near and dear to our hearts. I began in preschool in my educational career, and so this is a, this has been a long time coming, so we're very proud of that. Okay, so you could see here, the graph just simply delineates. It's intended to show you the progression of who we serve and the access that we're providing to our community. Hey, inter-district transfers. I always have to think, inter-district, intra. So outside of the district. This slide here, we're constantly looking at numbers. We're looking at, obviously with the intention of access and ensuring that we are providing the information to our parents, that they're constantly aware of our program. And so here, this is just a, a quick glimpse of by grade level, our inter-district transfers of, even though it's not news to us that the surrounding areas have now opened a dual-language program, we still continue to serve just surrounding districts that still come to our program because really, our reputation precedes us, but we continue to grow as a program as well, providing teachers support, et cetera. Okay, curric, some curricular updates. So on the same vein that we are constantly improving, we're looking at ways through feedback of teachers and talking to our community, being in the classrooms, being present. We're, we're looking for ways to continue to amplify the resources within our classrooms. We know that if we are supporting our teachers, ultimately, it reaches our students, which is what we're all here to do. And so for History and Social Science, when we did the adoption for History, Social Science, just a reminder, teachers are invited to be part of the pilot. That includes DLI teachers as well. And so History, Social Science was, the, Savas was selected as the best program for all of us here that teach for Anaheim Elementary School District. With that, we knew that the Spanish manual came in a PDF format or printed. So it wasn't apples-to-apples, so to speak, a TM that you would have seen in a classroom. And teachers, again, DLI teachers, I'll reiterate, that was voted, and they were okay with that because overall, the program met the needs of the students and their, the need that they needed for it to teach or instruct in the classroom. But we are constantly, we, we can't always control what publishers do, but we certainly try and try and try. And so this is an example of how, I will give a shout out to Laura Houston, because she has been working directly with Savas as well. And so with that, we, this year, we will be providing every single Spanish dual-language teacher with a full TM that has been trans-adapted into Spanish. And I'll remind everybody that trans-adapted does not mean it's just simply translated. Trans-adapted means that they do it from scratch, so that, to ensure that it is the appropriate language, et cetera, within the TM. So that's a huge triumph for us, and we're excited to be providing that to all of our teachers. Now, on the right-hand side, when it comes, again, when it comes to resources, it's never going to be apples. We just know that, the parity is not going to be there, for reasons I just mentioned. However, we're always on the lookout. And now that our name truly is on the map as being the best dual-language program, companies are constantly reaching out, hey, there's this product. And so we see a lot of curriculum come through our desk and our department. And so not all of them reach the slide, right? And so here, we have one that's extremely promising. So just a little bit of the process, and when we do have a program that looks very promising, that meets right away our criteria, it goes through a series of committees, right? There is a multilingual service committee that got to view the program. And there was also the Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment Committee that got to view the program. So it's a process before we even hit pilot. Before our teachers ever see it, we want to make sure that it's worthy of their time. And so there was, the Multilingual Service Council also has dual-language teachers present. And then we asked a few others if they would be willing to pilot and then give us true feedback on whether or not to move forward with this program. And so far, what they've seen, they're super ecstatic about. And so we're excited to be piloting that in four DLI classrooms, TK, first and second grade. And then we're hoping, we're hopeful that the next step would be to be able to purchase. If, again, the teachers say that this is a go, this is something that we want to see. So that's what we had in the program. I don't believe I said it's called Hands-on English, and that would be for ELD instruction in a dual-language classroom setting, TK through second grade. Okay, professional development, and whoa, a lot of text, right? This is intentional. I will, I promise I will not read the slide. But here you see specific to DLI. So again, I know I've said this before, but all of our DLI teachers are offered the same professional development, right? So all of our programs, right? We're all a general education, whether it's dual-language or not. Nonetheless, all of the teachers have optional professional development. There is a plethora of choices that they can make that, that, wherever they feel that they need more support in, it's available. On top of that, there's very specific needs that we know are, are, are within the dual-language setting. And so here you will see now, not only by dual-language, but now we see here by language as well in terms of what our teachers need in order to be able to feel supported in the classroom. So you can see here, I will highlight the New DLI Teacher Workshop. This is something that just occurred. And if you follow me on Spanish, the very last item there, we see gramatica y acentuación en español. And that's one that I want to highlight because we're extremely proud of it. So again, we know when we're searching for professional development that are actually delivered in the language of instruction or the partner language, they're slim to none. And some that promise are going to be delivered in Spanish, it's not the model language that I would want to then replicate in my classroom. So what do we do? We get to work and create our own. And I will highlight that we are working with one of our teachers, Claudia Sacks, who, this is one of the areas that she shines in. And so we, we, I was having a conversation, I went out and met with her, and she's like, this is something I would love to partner with you and create. And so we're in the middle of creating the Gramatica Sentacion PD, where it's a three-part series that we will be offering to teachers, paid opportunity, that they will be able to engage in. It's applicable, and it serves them as the educator to develop, but also it impacts students directly with their writing and that famous deal there that we all get very confused, myself included, when it comes to writing in Spanish. So that's one of the big highlights there. Okay, so we heard me mention the New DLI Teacher Workshops. You'll notice the date there, this was yesterday. So I want to take the time in the moment to welcome all of our new DLI teachers, the thirty-two teachers that are new to, not only, not all of them are new to our district. We did have eight that moved from English immersion into now Spanish immersion. So we're very excited, and that they're happy faces. And that was at the end of the day, and they're still smiling. So welcome. And then we have here our DLI Teacher Planning and Collaboration Day. Notice the date, that was today. And so here, this is a very popular day. This is one where they come energized, ready to plan out their entire year. They meet with teachers across the district, the same grade level. We start together here as a team. We give a few tips and tricks, and then they break off into their own, into different classrooms with their own grade level. And then we run around, provide services, as much as they're calling us or sending us hangouts. So it's a, it's a super exciting day where they're just re-energized to get the year going. So you could see that on the slide here. Okay, so DLI, DLI Access for All. That was our vision when we first grew to twenty-four schools, and it continues. Like you mentioned, I got really ahead of myself, because I was super excited. But you can see here, this is where I was supposed to announce preschool DLI in three classrooms. Yay, act surprised, yay, right? So this is pretty exciting, preschool DLI at three of our schools. And we do serve AM and PM. So the potential of twenty-four students in each, forty-eight students a day in, that we're serving in each of these classrooms. We also expanded to adding five more TK DLI classes, being in Spanish, and then one TK in Mandarin that is due to open its doors on August tenth. And then we have our expansion that we mentioned, the rollout to twenty-four schools, which is now at fourth grade. We're matriculated at fourth grade, and that also includes our Korean DLI at Jefferson. Okay, so Mandarin update, Mandarin DLI. Okay, so Mandarin update, Mandarin DLI. We have been working, right? We have been working. So, we, TK is also very special. We are the only TK Mandarin program. I need to say that. We're the only TK DLI Mandarin program. And we have been creating scope and sequence that go, since we're the only TK program, there's nothing out there. So, again, what do we do? We get to work, right? We have a soaring TK program on our English and Spanish side. So, we're modeling the scope and sequence and then finding the resources that are going to meet the high rigor that we expect here in Anaheim. And we created that scope and sequence. A lot of curriculum and resources created that I will show you in the next slide. And then here, just really briefly, we talk about the different aspects that we've been doing in order to recruit also for our Mandarin program, parent information meetings, posts, press releases, postcard mailers. We have farmer's market booths. We're also reaching out to universities. We've met with local churches. So, we've been just, and that's really been helpful. I will say selfishly, I have grown tremendously just learning about the Mandarin world, right? So, I have just been amazed at just how much learning comes with rolling out a program. I already know that, but that has served me to just grow as a person as well. Okay, so Mandarin TK DLI curriculum. You can see here the items that have been created to amplify the core curriculum that we have found and we decided to go with, which is Mandarin matrix and level learning. That would be for the literacy block. And then we have, of course, ST. You have to remember, it's TK. So, this is all forming, and it's really marrying two worlds, which is the pre-K and then kindergarten. So, we're bringing the pre-K standards, if you will, marrying them with kinder and ensuring that students are learning through play. That's one of the big items, and we're ensuring that, let's say, the kitchen area in a TK classroom has culturally relevant, appropriate play items in the kitchen, right? So, it's, that's been quite fun trying to find those items and ensuring that that's represented. So, we've done, we've been very successful in that area as well. So, I'll just leave the slide here. I know it's a lot of information, but that's just serving to show what's being created within our system, our entire, it requires a multitude of departments that come together to be able to roll this out. And we have our printing area, of course. We're printing a lot of our own in-house items once they have been trans-adapted as well. Okay, that brings me to our last slide with any, thank you for your time, and also any questions?
Questions? Mr. Alvarez?
I have a question. I just want to say thank you again for your hard work. It's like a plural linguistic machine right here, right? So, I'm just really proud of all of you. Thank you for all you're doing. I know you're investing a lot of your heart and your soul into all the work you do, and it shows, and I'm just so proud of you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Dr. McGillis?
No questions, only positive comments. Every single time you all come up here, you're always amazing us with just another layer, a multitude of layers, and now four different layers of just amazingness that we are leading the nation. So, thank you so much for your amazing presentation again, and all of your hard work.
I would just like to say that, you know, in one of the pictures of, that you have there, and one of the reasons why I'm all for the dual-language program and why it's so significant, especially in our community here in Anaheim, is in one of the pictures that you had there of your new hires, it's one of my former students.
Ah, sorry.
And this former student of mine, I remember, this was before California Dreamers, he was worried because he wasn't going to be able to afford college, and he wasn't going to be able to get financial aid. And instead, he became a California Dreamer, and basically his dreams of going to the university came through to fruition. He married his high school sweetheart, who is also my student. She is now a dual-language teacher over at Anaheim High School. And he is now capitalizing on his strength, his asset, you know, that he was born with and has always stuck with, and that is the Spanish language. And now he is a DLI teacher here in the Anaheim Elementary School District. And that just makes me so happy.
Wow, yeah.
I'm sorry, Madam, go right ahead.
I also have a lot of positive stuff to say too, but I also had some questions. So, I wanted to get to that first, if that's okay.
Sure.
Slide five. By the way, thank you very much for the very informative and comprehensive presentation, but I have a couple of questions. Starting on slide five, you mentioned the number of inter-district transfers was 186. Do you know roughly what percentage of our district that would amount to, if we were to quantify it? I think it's about one and a half percent. Would that be fair?
And that's just in dual, in dual immersion. That doesn't include any other inter-district as well. So, the actual percentage of people coming here could be higher, but I'll leave the math to Jesse.
Well, I think it's important just because it shows that there is that demand from families that don't live in the district, and that's helping us with our ADA, I'm sorry, 5% of the, of the dual enrollment, of the DLI. Okay. But of the entire enrollment, it's like one and a half. All right.
Trustee Lopez, can I ask a follow-up to that question?
Sure.
Just because it's related to this question. And I'm not going to ask specifically which school districts they're from, but what is the furthest? I'm really curious.
The furthest district? I don't know.
That a student goes all the way to our school for DLI. I'm just really curious. Does anyone know?
We can look into it and provide that in the Friday memo.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question. Thank you. Slide seven, you mentioned, obviously, the new teacher workshops. And then slides eight and nine talk about how we had the planning day today as well. In the past, we've had Cal State Fullerton partnership. Is that still ongoing? Will that continue? Yeah.
We've had several partnerships with Cal State Fullerton, depending on where the needs have been in terms of providing the BASP. If we remember, the BASP was part of enabling teachers to be able to obtain their bilingual authorization. We've also had TASEB, which has involved curriculum development for multicultural and culturally proficient learning. We were one of the first ones to embark in that. We've had the BECOME Project. So, those have all been numerous projects that we've had with Cal State Fullerton. I know right now, currently, we are helping fortify the Korean teacher pathway. So, we actually met with the principal at Jefferson and also Dr. Rodriguez Valls, who is, who spearheads at Cal State Fullerton, the program. And so, we have, we're fortifying that and having the teachers that are interested in or are in the program to get their Korean authorization to come and be in our classrooms and get their hours as well.
Right, thank you. And then I'm also wondering about the retention rate. So, when I have our students come in on TK, and you've mentioned the second-grade scare, you've mentioned all these things that happened throughout the years that they're with us. How is our retention rate through sixth grade, getting that sealed by literacy, moving on to the junior high level?
It is a very good question, and we looked into it. We don't have the data source to calculate that at this time. We're going to start to dig into it. The pandemic years kind of went wonky because we don't know where kids went during that period. So, we'll continue to look at the data to see if we can come up with a way to track that more accurately.
But is there a site? Sorry, can I ask a follow-up? I'm sorry, because they're very related. I really don't mean to interrupt, but do all of our sixth graders have a place to go to continue their DLI after they leave us? That's in their neighborhood?
In the Anaheim Union High School District, I believe there are two pathways. We're starting up the third one back at South, which should have been the OG, but now they're joining us. It'll be a South Catella, Brookhurst, Savannah, and, yeah. So, there's three places throughout the city for people to go.
Walker and Kennedy, yeah.
And we are in our initial conversations with them about Mandarin.
I do think that that's going to definitely be kind of a coming together of like the two districts and kind of figuring this out in the sense of, if we have the dual-language program for our Korean, you know, the program over Jefferson over here, you know, I think that it's over at Walker Kennedy is our place of Korean. Like, that's far, you know? I mean, for our families, that's, that's an entirely different city. You know what I mean? That's in La Palma, you know? So, I mean, we really need to figure this out, like in the sense, especially since our students are going to be in fourth grade. And as we've seen, it definitely takes a long time to get things rolling, considering South just got theirs open now. So, if we haven't already started this conversation, please, let's make sure we reach out and let's, let's get this ball rolling, you know?
Definitely.
All right. And then I don't want to put you in the hot podium too much, but I had a couple other questions regarding recruitment.
Yes.
And I won't ask you to name any sites, but is there any recruitment area that you might need our support, our assistance in to help with just balancing out numbers, getting the strands, kind of beefing that up a little bit?
And we're talking about recruitment for Mandarin specifically?
For just across the board.
So, I think in general, we do a good job of blanketing. Again, the whole rollout has been to provide access to all. And so, we're charged just to ensure that our families are aware of the opportunity. We had a, if I may share, we had a Mandarin parent meeting last night that was well-attended, and it was fascinating to see how culturally diverse the families were that were coming. And we had Spanish-speaking, Korean-speaking, Lao, and a Mandarin-speaking family. So, that was impressive, just the fact that they're even there to open their horizons. And I was speaking to a mom who has Korean in the home, but two of her children are currently in the Spanish program, and she's looking at putting her third in Mandarin because they want to teach each other. And so, that's what we're fostering. So, I don't, that really didn't answer your question, and I know that, but that's really what we're, our mission is, and I feel like we're accomplishing that in terms of recruitment. We did target specific areas where we know through language senses that, just to make sure that they were informed of the opportunity.
Okay. Well, and you guys are doing a lot of great work with, you know, the curriculum. I don't want it to go to waste. We want to make sure the class size is there for it, right? You got, we've got new hires. We have staff that we're training. So, we want to make sure that the class size is there for that as well. So, whatever we're doing with flyers, principal meetings.
Thank you.
The meetings that we're having here, the district office, just want to make sure that we can also support you.
Appreciate that.
Speaking for the board here. But as a single board member, I also want to be able to support you. So, and then the other question that I had was just in terms of the frequency of these presentations. I know quarterly was discussed previously. I think our last meeting where we saw you was in January. So, I don't know what you feel comfortable with as a staff, as a district, if that's too much, too little. So, when should we expect to see you again with another great update once the school year starts?
Quarterly. Quarterly. I'll be here every month if you want me to come every month, okay?
I'm going to hear you first. Okay, great. And then one last follow-up. The Mandarin language for TK, where the, you said only Mandarin, period, or is that like in California?
Mandarin TK that we know in California.
Okay.
Yeah. And I confidently say that because I searched. I wanted to visit a program. So, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for all being here, ladies. Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have.
So, we'll have our next one in November.
Thank you so much. Great presentation. And I know I'm looking at a fantastic team here. We really appreciate everything that is done. It's been exciting to watch DLI over many years grow and grow and grow and expand. And so, we appreciate what you do to make that happen. So, great team and great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Madam President, I have a very quick question because I know that Kabe just closed their conference proposals. And I know Kabe will be in Anaheim this upcoming school year. So, with that said, will we be presenting?
We are everywhere. I think we submitted up to 15 proposals throughout the district.
Yeah.
And it was like four o'clock on Friday, and I literally saw Mark Anderson. I was like, "Wait a minute. Hey, can you do this, please?" Went to do by four o'clock. And he was able to, with the help of the team, a culturally relevant mariachi proposal. So, we'll see.
All right.
Okay, is that everybody? All right. Thank you so much. All right, we are moving on now to the consent calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the board in one motion. There is no discussion of these items unless a member of the board, staff, or the public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Are there any items to be polled at this time?
I would like to poll items eight C, one through seven, starting on pages seven to page eight of the agenda. Page seven, eight, so it's items.
I'm sorry, what pages?
Page seven. Items eight C, one through seven.
Excuse me just one second. You said page seven, correct?
Page seven and eight.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Lopez? Any other board members?
Okay, and I will pull item eight A point six and eight A point seven for reasons of abstaining from voting.
Anybody else?
Okay. It's recommended the Board of Education approve, ratify the following consent calendar items with the exception of item eight C, one through seven, eight A point six, and eight A point seven, which were polled and will be voted on separately. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, Alvarez.
Any discussion on the remaining items? All in favor?
Aye.
That's a 5-0. Okay, so now, let's start with Mr. Lopez's on page seven, correct? Eight C. I don't think I'm in the right page. Okay, so it's the first seven selpa. Okay, do I need to read all of these or?
I move to discuss items one through seven under section C.
In a second, please?
Yes, second.
Okay. So, now the discussion. Mr. Lopez, I'm assuming you want to start?
Yes, I am in support of the items. However, I did want to just point out, as I'm looking at the funding sources, coming all from General Fund, and this has been an ongoing issue, I think, in terms of our Individuals with Disabilities Education Act that was passed, authorized by Congress, is supposed to be providing, I believe, a base level of funding of 40% for special education. However, we're funding this out of our General Fund budget, and I'm wondering, first of all, if that's accurate. Okay. And secondly, would these items that we're voting on, one through seven, qualify under IDEA for funding from the federal government?
So, so you see that noted as General Fund because everything comprises the General Fund. So, even though we'd receive, like you said, that 40%, it goes into our General Fund. Then, yes, the General Fund supports above and beyond that 40%, right? So, when we bring the item to the board for approval, it's General Fund because then it gives us the flexibility in the fiscal department to make the adjustments without having to come every single time for, you know, $5,000 here, $10,000 there. That's why it's listed as General Fund. But, yes, we cover at first every cost with everything that we get from both the state and the federal.
Okay. So, are we being made whole by the federal government then?
No, we still contribute, as you know. And typically, for us, I would say it runs that for every dollar we spend on special ed, we probably contribute 60 to 65 cents.
Okay. And the federal government should be 40 cents?
Yes.
For every dollar?
Yes.
And do we know how much they're contributing roughly? Maybe half of that?
We can share that information through the Friday board memo, but you'll see exactly what comes in from both the federal and then from the state. We'll share that with you. And then with the total cost, and then you'll see the difference that the General Fund supports.
Okay, thank you. No other questions.
Anybody else? Okay, so now we'll vote on the item, eight C, one through seven. All in favor?
Aye.
That's a 5-0. All right, we'll jump back to the items. I polled eight A point six. It's recommended the Board of Education approve an agreement between this district and the Anaheim Family YMCA to provide a program, administration, staffing, equipment, materials, training. Thank you.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That will be a four, and I will abstain. The next item, eight A point seven. It's recommended the Board of Education approves payment to the Anaheim.
We'll discuss the item.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is again a four, and with me abstaining. Thank you. Action calendar, there is nothing from the superintendent's office. Onto nine B, our educational services. It's recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number 2023-24/01, declaring the month of September as attendance awareness month.
So moved.
I wanted to second it, but I wanted to ask the maker of the motion if he would entertain an amendment.
Sure.
Okay. I believe it's the second to last, whereas.
I'm sorry, what was the second? Who was the second on that?
I was. I was the first.
No, you, you did the motion and the second was-
Mark.
Mark, thank you.
Is this with the updated language?
No.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, the updated language I wanted to add in toward the end here is, whereas the district recognizes there are documented reasons for occasional absences, including illness, and that students should stay home during these inevitable, unavoidable instances to recover fully, prevent potential infection of others, and prepare to return to school as soon as possible. And, in quotes. Well, the whereas is bold to pull that, but yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Janice Cato.
Okay, is there further discussion? Anybody have anything to add? Okay, so technically I'm supposed to ask if, Mr. Relis, if you are, you're the maker of the motion, do you accept the amendment?
Yeah.
And obviously, Mr. Lopez, you do. So there's no other discussion on the, now we're actually voting on the amendment to this, okay? On the proposed amendment to Resolution Number 2023 dash 24 slash 01. And so I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That's a five oh. Okay, now is there any discussion on the original motion to adopt the resolution, which now does include the approved amendment?
I think it's great that you added that amendment because we definitely do not want kids coming to school if they're ill. Um, you know?
Yeah, great idea.
Great.
Do I need a second? I don't need any sort of motion or anything like that, do I? It was already, okay, so we're good. So, okay, so if that concludes the discussion, then all in favor of the proposed revisions to the resolution, declaring the month of September as attendance awareness month?
Aye.
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 Okay, we have a five oh. So are we good on that? Are we happy, Ms. Sinia? Are you good? Okay, thank you. All right, we're moving on. Let me catch up here. Hang on one second. Okay, so I believe we're at the recommending the Board of Education approve submitting a federal full-service community schools grant as a consortium with Orange County Department of Education for Benito Juarez and Theodore Roosevelt Schools.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the item? All in favor?
Aye.
It's a five oh. Okay, into C, nine C, Selpa, there is nothing else. And human resources. So now we're into item one. It's recommended the Board of Education ratify and approve the appointment of applicant number 08022023 dash 01 to the position of Olive Street Principal effective July 25, 2023.
So moved.
Second, Lopez.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. And now Ms. Meland will, Mrs. Meland will give us a short introduction.
Thank you. Congratulations to Lynn Maher. Lynn has worked in AESD for 32 years as a classroom teacher, teacher on special assignment, resource teacher, and vice principal. Lynn most recently served the Roosevelt Community as their vice principal. Congratulations to Lynn as she begins her position as Olive Street Principal.
Okay, congratulations. Moving on to administrative services. Item E1, it's recommended the Board of Education approve an agreement between the district and self-insured schools of California, SISCs, 2000 K Street Larry E. Reader Building, Bakersfield, 93301, 4533 in California, to provide health and welfare benefits for all eligible employees from California School Employees Association, CSEA, and Anaheim Elementary School Management Association, ASMA, effective November 1, 2023.
So moved.
Second Alvarez.
Discussion?
I just want to say that I'm really, really pleased that CSEA and ASMA have taken advantage of this fantastic, fantastic plan. And I really, really think it'd be in the best interest for other associations to follow.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank Ms. Hurd for being here and letting us hear her out on this as well. And, you know, we got it this time. So, thank you, Ms. Hurd.
I just want to, I'm super proud that our district is here at this moment where we're able to provide healthcare to our employees in a way that is affordable and doesn't continue to be a point of stress, a stressor, right? Because that's a stressor for families. And if anything we can do to help to alleviate some of the stress about being an adult is, I think, our charge, right? So I'm just really proud of everyone working on this and getting it done. Thank you.
I would just back up all of that and say, yeah, I think it's great. And thank you also, Ms. Hurd, for the commentary. And so no further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That's a five oh. Okay, our next item, it's recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number 2023 dash 24 slash 04 to delegate authority to the superintendent and superintendent's designee to make decisions regarding health and welfare benefits. Motion?
So moved.
Second Alvarez.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is five oh. Now we're moving into our area of board discussion. Our activities are related to school business, and we will start with Mr. Alvarez.
Thank you, Lord President. I just have one item to report on. On July 22nd, I was able to attend the community schools conference held in conjunction with OCO at Sunkist Elementary. I'm just kind of happy to see how we're kind of joining forces with community folks and partners to bring this information to families. So there's a lot of work to do, but I think we'll get there and it'll be good for our kids and our families, right? So I'm just kind of happy about that. And I just want to welcome everyone back to another school year. I want to say happy new school year to all the employees and everyone coming back and starting next week. I'm very excited to see our third grader start his first day of school at Horace Mansell. Happy first day, everybody. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, President Philbeck. I wanted to start with a report from July 17th. Dr. Downing and I were able to attend a planning commission meeting here in the city of Anaheim, where we both spoke in opposition to a planned project that was ultimately approved five to two. I did want to thank two of the commissioners who dissented on the item, Luis Andres Perez and Jeannie Tran Martin, for really listening to the concerns of the, in some cases, decades-long residents regarding traffic concerns, speed, lack of crosswalks, parking noise in that neighborhood, which was a big concern. It wasn't absolute, but there was a correlation between the city of residents that I noted and their support or opposition to the project. Most of the public comments that were in opposition were by residents of Anaheim. Meanwhile, nearly all the comments in support were from not Anaheim residents. So I think it's very important as being representatives of our communities that we take into consideration the people who live here every single day. Live, work, play here. It's very important that we represent our constituents. There was one characterization I just wanted to clarify that the chair mentioned during the public hearing for this was that there was some outreach for our district in 2021. And I think that we have different definitions of what outreach means because there was not any petition or any application that came before us. I think it was just a letter notifying us of this is our intent, and that was it. And it was, right, yeah, and that was the extent of it. So there's no proposal or anything like that. So anyway, just wanted to make that clarification. On July 29th, I was able to attend with Board Clerk Relis, who was there as well. We were at a community resource fair. The county of Orange hosted at, we hosted at Ponderosa. This was a great example of collaboration between our district, the county of Orange, various levels of government representatives that overlap here in Anaheim. I wanted to thank Supervisor Sarmiento for organizing this, coordinating all the logistics. He did also mention that he was excited to work together on supporting community schools. No doubt that was from his previous weekend with some of us from AESD. So I wanted to thank also Ponderosa staff and the district staff for not only providing the parking access, but also use of the stage area, the lunch table area. We also had three classrooms that were available for intake for social services. The social services agency rolled out with a couple of vans, a big mobile home type of vehicle in order to process any of the residents who might live in the area that qualify and are eligible for services. So I just wanted to thank them for that. I thank Principal Valdez for having attended as well. And I know Board Clerk Relis was excited about the face painting that they had there, especially for his dog. So it was a great time was had by all. A couple of days later, on Monday, I was able to attend with President Philbeck the leadership summit that we had the downtown community center. There were approximately 160 attendees from our leadership team, our administrators. So this was a great opportunity to also build community among our staff before the beginning of our school year. So I'm looking forward to our site leaders taking a lot of that information back to their campuses and working with their staff on that. It was also a positive having our city manager and assistant city manager, I think, attend as well, given some of the pressing concerns that we have throughout the city. A lot of our sites have had safety concerns, you know, unauthorized individuals entering campuses, scaling fences, things like that. So I think it's important for administrators, our staff, to know the faces of the city management, the city administration, because they oversee our parks, traffic, public safety, all those operations. So I think it's good to put a face to the name and have that contact. So there's even an ice cream cart that we had, too. So that was also exciting. And then finally, yesterday, I was able to attend the Start Smart Walks, putting up some door hangers just to remind some of our families about the upcoming school year. I was at Clara Barton for a walk, and then I was able to get to the tail end of the Orange Grove Elementary Walk. So I did get some photos in. Francisco and Yvette from Orange Grove were kind enough to take a selfie with me as well. So when I say thank you to all of them for braving the heat and humidity out there and reminding our families about our school year. So with that, I'll just echo trustee Alvarez and say happy new school year. And I'll conclude my remarks.
All right, yes, I wish everyone a happy and amazing school year. I hope you had a great summer. I did have a great summer. I was able to see my mom get remarried. She married in Maui, so we did spend some time in that beautiful island. Yeah, not much to report. I did attend the community schools conference, which I think was an amazing event. Talk about transformative schools. Thank you. Orange County Congregation Community Organization. I also want to give out a shout-out to our superintendent, who did an amazing speech in the morning. And of course, trustee Relis, who spoke on behalf of Anaheim Elementary School District, and trustee Jessica Guerrero, who spoke for Anaheim Union with regard to the community schools. And it was just great. I do also want to share that I did, I was the keynote speaker at the University of Redlands Center for Educational Justice Conference. And I share that because I did share some of the great things that we're doing at Anaheim Elementary. It wasn't the majority of the presentation. I literally copied and pasted Lauren Houston's presentations, a culmination of four different presentations on our crest model, and spoke using her words and made sure to give credit for our staff who did that work on ed services. So I want to make sure that, you know, throughout my presentation, there were superintendents in school districts all over from Redlands, Chino, Lake Elsinore, the Inland Empire. So I did share some of the work we're doing in addition to my research within ethnic studies. Also, real quick, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to always, as a professor and school board member, bring in both of the work because it's important that we know that our work is based in empirical research, education research. I will be going to Oahu to the 13th International Conference on Education and Justice on Cal State LA's dime. But I will also present with regards to, with the permission of the board and cabinet on our DLI, because I will be presenting alongside my cousin Jenny, who has her own children. I've spoken about this a lot with regards to the Hawaiian immersion program. So I want, I've been given three minutes, so I will be sharing a few things, if that's okay with the board. This is an international conference, and I think it's important that the world knows the amazing work that we're doing. That's all I have to report. Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, is this a field trip? Like, is this an invite? I heard that as an invite. All right. You know, more or less, kind of, everything that I've participated in these last few weeks, you know, have already been said by my board of colleagues. You know, I was blessed to have a nice vacation and disconnect and get away for a little while, which was fantastic. But right when I came back, I hit the ground running and started work again. And it was awesome to really speak at the OCO event. What was even more awesome about it was our parents. The Anaheim Elementary School parents are amazing. Maritza Bermudez, Rosie, I mean, these women who we've just seen develop and grow as leaders within our district, to now know how to organize, who really have taken it up a notch, who are working with nonprofits. And as I sat there, looking around our amazingly beautiful Sunkist Elementary School and our multipurpose room, you know, built by the money of the constituents in the area with our bond, you know? I mean, that's what it's about, you know? And that's what community schools is about, and that's what it should be about. It's not just a program. It's a total change in the way we do things. And really, we have been doing these things in Anaheim Elementary School District for quite some time, and it's just now putting a title on it. So I was super proud that we had good representation there. The comments that have been made to me from various parents that were there have all been very positive, very excited, excited about the possibilities. And once again, I'd like to commend Dr. Downing, Dr. Gray, the team. You know, having you there and your presence and what you said, it's very meaningful, you know? And that means a lot to our folks, you know? And we definitely appreciate that. The following weekend, I was over at Ponderosa with my colleague, trustee Lopez. And we were able to, it's true, they wouldn't paint my poor Frida Wida's dog face, but whatever. I claim discrimination, but they didn't care. But she is a dog. But as a result, it was a good time, and we had a blast. And it was really cool to just see how many people were actually there. Once again, it was well-done. The distribution of groceries, the distribution of different services that we have, it was great. And kudos to Dr. Valdez, the principal there, for being there as well in the morning. I, later that day, and I am going to speak about this just because of the fact that, once again, it's about our students and our community. I just would like to give a shout-out because later that day, I was even further blessed because there was a grand opening of a place called City Paws. And it is a local Anaheim pet boutique that has great clothes, I know, for dogs, and toys, and prizes, et cetera. They had their grand opening that day. And the reason why I bring it up is because of the fact that that student is a proud product of Franklin Elementary School and the owner of it. And she went to Franklin, and then she went to Sycamore, eventually graduating from Anaheim High School. So she's a local girl, and I firmly believe we need to make sure we support our local community and support our own, especially those that go through our district, which is awesome. Please do. They're great. It was really cool. Some things I just want to put out there, you know, please, everybody, mark your calendars if you haven't done anything yet for, or you need back-to-school supplies. Our Carlos Leon, the- Uh, Carlos Leon, the councilman for District Two, is going to be hosting a back-to-school bash, uh, over at the park. You can find it, um, on social media on August twelfth. Um, it will be from ten o'clock to two o'clock. It is on social media. I don't know the name. Uh, Madison or Madison Park. So, um, I think that's very, uh, important that, um, you know, th- these are another availability opportunity for our parents and our families, um, and check it out. And Carlos Leon has some people on the commission that actually, uh, truly love, uh, public education, truly believe in it. Um, and last but not least, uh, some interesting facts, uh, that I just wanted to bring up. We have been pushing for so, so long, uh, for South Junior High School and to get the dual-language program there. And they got the dual-language program there. And so basically, I had my colleagues, uh, over, uh, Mr. Alvarez and I were in a long three-hour meeting today, um, with all the other administrators in AUHSD. Uh, but while we were there, I was able to pull some data from the administrators over at South, um, asking about their dual-language cohort. They have a total of two, uh, classes in seventh grade. They have a total of fifty participants. I want to say, uh, they pulled up the numbers, the individuals, uh, from the schools. We have one student that is in the program at South Junior High School that was in the dual-language program at Ross. We have seven students that were in the dual-language program over at Ponderosa. We have seven of them that were in the dual-language program at Lincoln. And we have, out of Benito Juarez's thirty-five, thirty-five are all of them at South Junior High School in the dual-language program. So, um, it's a large cohort. Um, yes, we do have a lot of our families, though. Uh, we still have a lot of our families, especially from Lincoln, Ponderosa, or, or Ross especially, um, heading over to Sycamores because I know the Sycamore's dual-language program itself, it's large. It's the established one. That's the one that we've had, uh, going for a long time in the Anaheim Union High School District. Um, but we're just really proud of what, uh, South Junior High School, um, has been able to accomplish, um, this year in regards to their promotion. And I'm, I'm fairly certain, um, with the leadership of Principal Yoli Mejia, um, they're going to, it's going to continue to grow, be stronger, um, and, uh, you know, just continue this, this amazing program that we have, um, here in the Anaheim Elementary School District, but at the secondary level. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Relis. Um, also, I attended the Community Schools Conference at Sunkist, and a lot's been said about that. So I'll just say, yes, it was wonderful. It was a very informative, interesting day. And thanks to everyone that participated and put that together. It was well-run and, um, just, it, it was really, uh, a lot of people were there and a lot of great information was given. Also, on the twenty-sixth, I was joined by Dr. Kim, Principal of Roosevelt, and Mr. Chavaria. And we went to the Anaheim Utilities Meeting where Roosevelt received the Water Smart Landscape Award. And we really appreciate that. It was a, it was just a, uh, a great award. The campus, uh, the, the school is beautiful, and it's just really nice that that was recognized. And we all had a moment to speak and just really appreciate the recognition. So, thank you Anaheim Utilities Board for that. Um, this past Monday, along with Mr. Lopez, we attended the Leadership Summit, the Staff Professional Day at the Community Center. And that was just a fun day. It was great. I got to stay for most of it, lunch. And we also had speakers, uh, our key speaker was Dr. Victor Rios, and then our city manager, James Vanderpool, and deputy city manager Greg Garcia uh, had, uh, just a really great, informative, uh, time with our group and were able to answer questions. So that was fun. Um, I also did, yesterday, do the Jefferson Smart Start. And, yeah, it was hot. But we, we had a lot of progress. We went to, we did actually some, some more in-depth door visits. And I kind of hung back and just, uh, listened and watched the teachers and, uh, principal song. And they just did a great job, and we really got to a lot of, uh, a lot of parents and a lot of family members there about the kids starting school. And so it was really a great day, although, a great morning, although it was, it was pretty hot. I'll have to give it that. Uh, also, this last, uh, weekend, I visited, uh, the East Anaheim Branch Library for their Harry Potter Hogwarts event, and it was great. The kids came dressed up as their favorite Harry Potter character, and they participated with crafts and trivia. And there was like a screen with Hogwarts that you could stand and get your picture taken. So it was great for the families. And I mention that because I would like everyone to also please mark your calendars because on Sunday, August twenty-seventh, from one to four PM, at the Anaheim Central Library on Broadway, we will be celebrating the sixtieth anniversary of the library. Since nineteen sixty-three, the Central Library has been the heart of knowledge to the greater Anaheim community with various programs, events, services, and circulating collections. And I can tell you that it's amazing what's going on in the libraries now and the programs that are available. So I hope you can all come out and join. I know Fran and some other transportation will be available. Um, you'll be able to join in a lot of festivities. There will be a self-portrait college craft corner. Maybe you can get the, the Frida, the self, yeah. A trivia contest, scavenger hunt, and there's going to be prizes and a grand prize table, ta, prize of a tablet. So also, that, to celebrate the sixty years, there's going to be storytime with Sesame Street characters, Elmo and Cookie Monster. Charles Phoenix, the pop culture expert, will present on Googie architecture. And then on to his Disney reel. And in addition, there's a big one here. Um, families will be able to make birthday hats for the cake-cutting and enjoy music from special guests, Sean, Olio, and the Coastline Cowboys. So it's, it's a big, big deal, and it's going to be a lot of fun. So please, again, mark your calendars, Sunday, August twenty-seventh, one to four PM, at the Anaheim Central Library. Thank you for listening. That's all I have. And let's move on to future agenda items. Do any of board members have any?
Yes, I have, uh, two, uh, brief items. Um, the first one is, just given our discussion earlier with, uh, Mr. Chavaria, uh, about the, um, IDEA funding, uh, if we could draft up either, I'll say this as broadly as possible, uh, to make it easier for staff uh, and help Nissinko with this as well. But if we could have a letter and/or resolution, um, some communication that we could send to our federal representatives, um, in order to remind them about the commitment that the federal government has made and, um, ask for their assistance in getting that funding, securing funding, voting for our students. Um, that would be great. I know the federal fiscal year is coming up, is October first. So there's a little bit of a tight timeline there in less than two months. Um, usually that kind of goes a little later, though, for other reasons, uh, we won't get into. But I think it's important that we shine a light on this and that we continue to remind our representatives when we see them at our school sites, when we see them at events, to let them know this is important and make sure that we're having that communication with them. Um, second one is also, um, another, um, letter and/or communication of support for H.R. eighty-two, which is a Social Security Fairness Act of two thousand and twenty-three, uh, which is a bill that's going through Congress right now that would repeal provisions that reduce social security benefits. So a lot of our teachers, a lot of our staff may have had a private sector career before coming to, um, the school district. And, uh, as a result, in their retirement, their social security benefits would be reduced based on their pension. So, uh, this is kind of a game changer for a lot of folks, I think, in terms of their earned income that they have. They've spent, you know, maybe a decade or more in the private sector, or they've accumulated social security quarters of credit, uh, you know, throughout their life that, uh, will be reduced, uh, upon their retirement. So if we could, um, have a, have some support for our federal representatives to remind them about that as well, uh, to support that bill, uh, that would help some of our employees. Those are my only two items. So, thank you.
Okay, but before we adjourn, I want to extend a very big welcome to our new Communication Coordinator, Belinda Cordillo, correct? We have waited for you. We waited a long time for you, and we're very, very, very excited that you're here. Um, we know it's going to be a big job, but you look like you're up to the task, so. Yeah, and, and I'm looking forward to meeting with you soon, and maybe you'll get a chance to meet with each of us. And, uh, this is a great place to work, and we just are really, really glad that you're here. So, welcome. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Our, our, our next board meeting is Wednesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And I adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-one. Have a good, great rest of the week, everyone, and weekend.